I'm fixing to leave this meeting and they ain't gonna be nothing.
Get ready for one of the most explosive town hall meetings ever in Otter Creek. There's cops, broken civil protection orders. People are walking out to try and block things from happening in the town. And you know who's not there? Me. Anybody that says I'm the common denominator in Otter Creek, uh, debunked. That's John Crook and Lynette getting out of the Jeep Gladiator. They've been parked out there since 4:45 PM with a four-year-old. How do we know? Because that's what she told the local deputies.
Hi, calling to report my neighbors violating my civil protection order.
The deputies aren't there yet, but they're on their way. And unfortunately, at this point in time, there was a shooting in the local area. And three deputies this week actually stepped down from Levy County. What responsible parents would ever place a four-year-old in the middle of this town dispute, knowing that the sheriff deputies are coming and on their way? That's Don the Con at 6:30 PM. One of the first times ever he's been early to a meeting. This is all pre-planned. This has all been set up. Number one, to try and entrap me because Lynette has a temporary injunction in Florida against me until the final hearing. But I have permanent civil protection orders against her and the Crook. They cannot be on any public or private road. Doesn't matter 500 feet away. They cannot be in any public or private building. Doesn't matter 500 feet away. And it all applies with George as well. They must be 500 feet away. No matter your ifs, your buts, your ands, your what-ifs, it does not matter. They cannot legally be there. And the state of Florida legally has to enforce the Ohio Civil Protection Orders. But she goes on later to tell the deputies that her lawyer, Joshua Silverman, told her to be there. So instead of removing themselves from this area when George is there, they know George is there. They filmed George was there. She's holding papers, which is the papers for the temporary injunction. She goes into the building and Crook stays the entire time, breaking the Ohio Civil Protection Orders. Does she think she's above the law? Does he think he's above the law? Or is Silverman, Joshua, finally understanding who he's representing? And he's trying to throw them under the bust of the law? Lynette is inside. Crook is blocking the entrance so George can't get inside. George can go anywhere she wants. She has no restrictions on her life whatsoever. They, on the other hand, must remove themselves from the situation, from the area, from the building, from the road, 500 feet or more away. You hear John telling the child, "Don't touch anything. Don't touch nothing." How is he expecting a child to obey when he himself can't even obey the legal orders of a judge? The law. You can see George's black Jeep right behind. They've yet to flee. They must flee. If they don't, they risk arrest. There's people in this meeting that haven't been there for years. Laura Mott, Stuart Stewart. What are they doing here? All of the sudden, out of the blue? All of this was pre-planned by Russ the Sus. They're all early. There's cameras filming. You've got John and Lynette. They're blocking the entrance. It was all for entrapment and it was all for Russ the Sus' plan, which blew up big time in his face. The unmistakable legs of Stuart Stewart with knee-high socks. I had comments to share this night. Obviously, I'm not there because there is a temporary injunction in Florida on me. And unlike Lynette, I actually respect and honor the law. Therefore, I'm not going to be there until she is 500 feet away. Now, she obviously has not respected the law at all as she's still there. Shows no fear whatsoever. Has not retreated whatsoever. How do you think this is gonna look to a judge in the court in Florida? If you recall, last month, Russ the Sus had an illegal meeting that he's being investigated for outside of town hall. And now, when he's declared last month that he's taking the town back, he's gonna be mayor, here he is trying to exercise mayoral rights that he does not have.
The agenda.
The agenda has this going.
Move, fill in the council seats to the first thing on the agenda.
What's the agenda?
It's never been done in the past. It's always been done at the end of the meetings.
Negative.
Always.
Negative.
Okay, so do we have an agenda? We're gonna approve the agenda or we're just gonna give the order of the agenda as it is?
Yeah, I need agenda right here.
Okay, are you approving the agenda? You're asking for approval on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
No. First thing I need to do is fill the vacant council seats.
That's one with, one without. The council seats will be brought up after the minutes, after we discuss the minutes.
Nice. The council seats is right there on the top, under new business. The second thing that she's got listed there. Let's go by the agenda.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking for you to approve the agenda then we'll go back to this. It's just like soliciting.
Sheriff, go ahead.
So you approve the agenda?
If we do the, fill in the council seats first, yes.
Well, we gotta approve the minutes before we approve the meeting.
Are you asking that it be first under new business or first overall?
First under new business.
That's what it is.
Russ the Sus yet again proving his complete and total utter ignorance.
So we got approval on the agenda?
I don't, I don't, uh, about this term or that meeting. Yeah, I made a motion to approve the agenda. And now we're waiting for a second.
That's correct. That's what we're asking Russ for. He's saying, he's saying yes, but he's not saying he's approved.
Oh, that's a damn.
Okay, so we're gonna take that as an approval and move forward.
Move forward.
Okay. And I, that's all I see now is. Okay, new business, qualifying results, fill in the vacant council seats. Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry. I did tell them. We approve for the minutes for December 19th minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for 19th, December 19th?
Are you asking for a vote?
I'm asking for you. I'm asking for you to approve the minutes. Yes, sir.
I made a motion to approve, approve the minutes. Are you gonna refer it to vote, don't we?
No, I thought, I wasn't with the impression you made a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, the agenda.
So we moved on from that.
Then Russ will do the same thing on the minutes.
Okay, very good. My mistake.
I didn't have time to study the minutes and see what, see what I want to say. I can't approve them right now.
Well, in your left, you wanna take a moment real?
First time ever, they all show up early and he still hasn't looked at the minutes? I hope you realize this is only intentionally to stall, to sabotage the entire meeting.
7:15, Levy County Sheriff's still not here. John Cook is blocking my way to go into town hall. I don't feel comfortable going in there because that man scares me. Lynette's inside right now at the meeting, but I'm still out here waiting in my vehicle for Levy County Sheriff to show up.
To clarify, we got, we got three minutes there. Let's clarify the minutes so I can hear the background answer all, each one. We have the one set of minutes from the 6:30 meeting talking about the grant for the interim and for the community senate. That took place at 6:30.
Not the public hearing.
Definitely, not the public hearing, not, not a council meeting.
I don't see a problem with the minutes for the special meeting, but the other one.
Was the justice special meeting first?
I agree on him.
Was the justice special meeting first? Are you ready on? On the special meeting, are you ready for the special meeting? Russ, you ready? You don't make a motion to accept the minutes for the special meeting?
I don't know.
You don't know? I'm asking for a motion to accept the minutes, the minutes of the special meeting.
This is literally nothing more than geriatric babysitting. Don is just trying to be difficult for the sake of being difficult.
I might be rushing to do the special meeting. They're, they're okay.
Second.
I don't know.
Okay. He might have had a stroke, you guys.
I'm gonna give a second. Is it all second? All seconded and we will pass that on.
Actually, when the mayor wasn't supposed to make a motion, we were seconding.
He's not the mayor.
I think he can second. I mean, again, you've got a limited, you've got a limited quorum. I think, I think he can second to advance a motion. If not, it's like there's only two council members.
Okay, so this is asking for a motion on the minutes.
It's supposed to be you can take a vote on that.
Oh, oh, sorry. How many say aye for the minutes for the special meeting?
I'm, I'm, I'm the, the special.
That's two, that's two for one minute. Thank you. All right, for the past meeting, for the minutes for the special meeting for the Otter Creek on December the 19th at 7:50, we discussed the tax change modification.
I think we've got the public hearing left and then I think we've got the regular meeting. He just did the special meeting, which was on the, the changes to Richard notice.
Yeah, because the first one was just the public notice.
Okay, all right, so that's the public, all right, that's vote meetings for the agenda and the, for the grant and for the tax credit modification.
You just did that, but that was the special meeting, the tax modification.
Okay.
You have the public hearing first and then you have your regular meeting last.
I thought they done the separate meetings as well. All right, for the minutes for the December 19th meeting. We're getting a motion to accept that.
What's going on with the resolution, Matt?
Um, that was the special meeting. This is the minutes.
I think.
This is the minutes for the.
You had the three. You had a public hearing first, which is, I think it was the first one in your package.
It was this guy.
That's. Yeah, the broadband grant was your public hearing.
Correct.
And then you had the special meeting on the trim notice and then, which is this? And then you had your regular meeting minutes.
What do you have on the minutes to nudge there for the night?
For, I have the, the public hearing. Then we have the special meeting for the trim and then we have the normal council.
So we got motions on our passport and all, you're pressing together.
Yes, so you have three total. You have not gotten approval for your public hearing and your regular minutes.
All right, that's what we're, public hearing for our, our public meeting for December the 19th at 7:00 PM. I'm asking for a motion for the accept the minutes. For which meeting? The 7 o'clock meeting, the regular meeting.
What's the point? I'm telling you, Jerry.
Really?
I'm talking myself.
Oh, my God.
Under the motion that we passed this meeting.
I'll go to that.
So we got a motion and a second. All in favor? All three?
Just your public hearing. The first one.
Right.
A motion to approve the minutes of your public hearing.
All good.
The broadband grant, that was something happened.
Yes, sir. All right. All right, so we got the special meeting. We got the meeting, we didn't get the broadband vote on that. We made a motion to accept the minutes on the broadband.
The regular meeting?
No, it was the first meeting that we had.
The one with Fox was yours?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the public meeting.
What's the public meeting? One and the special.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm making a motion on that.
I'll do that.
Okay, so an aye, all vote, all ayes? Three? Minutes or the ayes?
All that ridiculousness just to get the agenda and the minutes approved. What do you think they're gonna do once he wants to seat some individuals who have qualified for the two one-year seats? Let's see what's happening outside first.
How are you, ma'am?
How are you?
Oh, damn paradise.
All right, so they can't be here. And the state attorney said, "You guys, we're gonna honor our protection order" and that they can't be 500 feet, whether it's a public or a private entity. Here they are.
I understand that. So I, on the way down here, I talked to my sergeant, he talked with our chief. Um, I guess they have a temporary injunction.
They don't have one on me.
So.
I have a civil protection order, a permanent one, on him and her, and he's blocking me from going into the meeting.
Okay, so I guess they, from what I've been told to do is, I guess they're saying they called in previously. I guess they were sitting here. I don't know what, I'm gonna go make contact with them and see what they were doing here. Um, they apparently called in and said that they're, they have valid reason to be here, whether it's for jobs or something like that. I'm gonna go validate that. Either way, I'm gonna do an information report documenting this and we can send it to the state attorney's office. So that's what we've been doing.
Okay, so you're not gonna make her, she's inside. She has to leave.
I'll go talk with her, but if she has a valid reason to be here, obviously, from the get-go, like if she was already here when you got here, I'll talk with her and see if she can leave, obviously, because you have the injunction.
Right, mine's permanent against them. She has to leave.
Okay, give me one second. Let me check. I'm gonna go inside and check the temporary injunction because I was trying not to read while I was driving.
You'll see that the temp's, I'm not in there.
Okay.
And he needs to leave too.
Yes, ma'am.
This is ridiculous.
This is so ridiculous.
Valid reason. Do you realize there is no valid reason in the Ohio Civil Protection Orders? It is, they cannot be in any public or private road, public or private building. No matter what, there aren't ifs, buts, ors, or anything else. There is no valid reasons for a job or invalid reasons. They legally cannot at all be within 500 feet of myself or George.
My stomach is just in knots right now.
Mine too. It doesn't seem like there is no protection in this area.
No. So Todd just took a seat.
Well, he sat down, but didn't he take a seat? But he sat down.
All right, we got qualifying results for the election. Our, we have two people, let me get the pictures, I'll make sure I straighten them. We have two, we have two seats open for one-year term. And the two one-year term seats, qualifications, qualifying candidates for the two, for the, for the one-year seats were Joseph and Carl. And they were, so they were unopposed. So these candidates will be, will, will take a seat tonight as council.
Negative, they will not take a seat till the election.
We're gonna put replacements in line.
Negative.
Because we were too close to the election to do anything except that we already got called by.
Get your charter out and read it.
That's totally against the charter.
I don't want the charter, Mr. Smith.
I know what the charter says, but I know in the past, when it's been this close to the election, you've not filled a seat.
Never, never. And we ain't filling those seats without an election anyway. Well, I make, I make a motion that we go ahead and fill the vacant council seats before we do anything else.
That's what we're fixing to do. We're gonna fill these seats with qualifying candidates through the election process. There was nobody, nobody had protested their qualifications and voted and went into the list.
I make a motion.
They are the two qualifying seats for the spot.
I make a motion now.
And they're gonna be going into the seat.
Negative. I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Stuart Stewart to fill one of the vacant seats.
We're not calling for a motion. It's time. We are going to.
You ain't got a call for a motion. There's a motion on the floor. I'll shut it. And a second.
Well, I do not. And we will seek the seats with the qualifying candidates through the election process.
No, 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 we will not do that.
Some of us were cheated out of qualifying.
No, you weren't. You signed an affidavit yourself, said you wanted me to withdraw.
For a reason, and she knows what that reason was.
Whatever it was, that was your choice.
Did I lie to you?
No one lied to you.
Yes, she did.
It's a miracle, all of a sudden, Don the Con can hear. He's hearing Lynette and pushing her and telling her, "Shut up." And she's calling Belinda a liar? This is a professional victim who's now calling Belinda a liar. Isn't it ironic?
Let's have a discussion briefly about how we got here and what the problem is and then, and then hopefully we can sort this out. So your charter provides that you are to seat three in an odd year and two in an even year.
I don't think it said odd year or even year. It said alternate years.
It does say odd year, even year. But, but I'll be glad to point it out to you. But the bottom line is, three in an odd year, two in an even year. Last year, you seated four because there was a vacancy. Because the charter does not speak to what happens in the event of vacancy as far as the elections and getting off, off that schedule. So last year, you seated four. Then there was disagreement over who would serve the one-year term. And there was a meeting in July where there was discussion about Mr. Meeks being assigned the one-year term. He disagreed. The suggestion of your counsel was to speak an attorney general opinion. And in the following month, there was an attempt to do so. There was at least telephone attempts to speak the opinion of the attorney general. And then after that, there was basically a decision, a discussion by the mayor to appoint Mr. Meeks to that one-year term. I'm just giving you the factual background, what happened. People disagree with it, but I'm just giving you the factual background. So after that, and I'm not saying that was, that was the rule, but this is what happened. She assigned him to the one-year term. When this year's qualifying came up, again, it's an even year. There generally would be two seats, but instead there were four. And the premise behind that was, there were two vacant seats. Mr. Meeks, based on the one-year term that he was assigned, was up for election this year. And then when the mayor resigned, there was an additional vacancy. I am sorry, I said two vacancies. Your seat was up as well, Mr. Turner. Um, so there were four vacancies this year. When it was initially advertised, I mean, and this is my understanding, I'm not saying it's the gospel, but this is my understanding, there were three vacancies. They had not yet received the mayor's resignation. So there were three vacancies that were advertised. Um, when the mayor's resignation was received, it changed to four. In an effort to straighten out the odd-year, even-year conundrum, it was expressly advertised that two of those seats would be for a one-year term in order to get back on the odd-year schedule and two of those seats would be for a two-year term. That's how those individuals signed up and that's how they qualified. And so the problem is, and I've discussed this with some of you, the charter is, is old and badly needs a rewrite.
And so does the Bible, you know?
Did Don the Con literally just say that God's word needs to be rewritten?
Today's government, our government. But the bottom line is, it needs a rewrite. There's no provision for what happens when you get out of that. And so there have been multiple attempts to try to bring that back into, into focus so that, because keep in mind, you talk about following your charter. Your charter says, "Shall elect in an odd year, shall elect in an even year." Three, you know, two and three, even and odd. And so that's what was attempted to be done. And the method for that was to have those individuals qualify for those specific terms and know what they were facing going into that. So based on that, you've qualified two individuals for one-year terms, unopposed because they were two one-year seats. And then there are several individuals who are qualified to run for the two-year terms. And so that's kinda how you got here. And now, obviously, you're trying to rectify that and straighten that out. I think there's a couple options for how you go about that. But again, you talk about, you know, kind of following what you've put out there and the process that you've put out there. The qualifying was done so that those individuals knew what seats they were getting. And to backtrack now, in my opinion, when you talk about facing a legal challenge, those individuals qualified for those seats. in my opinion, when you talk about facing a legal challenge, those individuals qualified for those seats, no one else did. And to put someone else in over those that qualified, I think is problematic.
Remember the words Megan the Lawyer said, "These individuals were qualified." And why is it important? Because John Crook and Lynette tell the sheriff deputies that they were going to be appointed to these seats, that they do not legally qualify for. Now, with Form 6, you must be legally qualified to sit in a seat on town council. So, they lied to the sheriff deputies, and then Russ the Sus goes out and lies to the sheriff deputies.
You can't put these people in before the election, they will be killed.
You can't. Your charter says, shall be appointed by the council at the next meeting.
And we are, and we are going to appoint them at the next meeting. But not them, they don't go in until after the election.
But you were.
But they're unopposed.
No, no.
They're unopposed.
It's so bad.
So, they're not running for election?
They're already appointed to the seat. The seats are open, and they are qualified people for the seats.
The whole problem is, whenever.
It typically says, the people that get the highest number of votes shall be elected to the seat.
And doesn't say what to do when you're filling vacancies, or, and I take it back, it does say that. It says that they shall be appointed by the remaining members of the council at the next meeting.
But not, not the people that's qualified to run in the election. They don't do nothing until the election. We put, we fill the, the seats with people that we want to.
The election's on the floor.
Exactly.
Nobody run against me, I was straight in. I didn't wait till the election.
Did you hear that sweet, magical voice of truth behind the camera? It says, "When I ran unopposed, you just sat me right away, you didn't wait till the election." So, Russ thinks he can do whatever he wants, at any time, with anyone he wants, even though Florida just changed the laws, and Russell didn't fill out any forms to qualify himself to run.
I'm fixing to leave this meeting, and they ain't gonna leave the meeting, because this, this is wrong.
That's your call.
Take his check back.
So, last month's meeting, Zim has an emergency, so there is no meeting. Russell has negative things to say about Zim, because Zim's not there for the meeting. But now, Russell openly declares he's going to leave the meeting, so that there is no meeting. So, would this be hypocrisy? Because Russell has pulled this move many times in the past to make sure there is no quorum.
When I run, I was straight in. There was nobody run against me, and I was straight in. I was straight in.
If you know it's wrong.
It's not wrong.
Absolutely.
Alright, well, there's still a quorum, so.
She had, the ex-mayor had no authority to decide that, especially when she was one of the.
She absolutely cannot even say the truth. You have now qualified and gotten, you, you, the town has gone through the qualifying procedure, and this is what was done, and now you're telling people that qualified, unopposed, that they're not entitled to their seats. That's the problem.
Who, who, who said they qualified? Town council, there's the ones that, that.
Hey, your clerk is the qualifier.
Russell Dunn, when I run, when I run, I was unopposed, and I was straight in, remember? When I run, I was straight in, nobody's gonna wait to know.
Available for the election.
The ignorance here is overwhelming. I mean, some of these people can't even spell the simple word biscuit.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't have no, no election.
Are we going to, uh, are we gonna do this like with the vice president?
You know.
You're doing other species, this, this is what is the rules. You should have appointed one of your colleagues when it's on your seat, and when it forced the election.
Please.
Oh, I tried to qualify, I was lying to.
If I have to do this again, I'm asking you, if I have to get, ask to cut, y'all have to quiet down again, those people would be asked to leave. So, let's keep this thing in order. That's your call.
No, this is not right.
We are, this is, this is within the rules.
I wonder if they do it last week? No, I, 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 I know that. There's, there's no way that, that they could, uh, it could be done, but not, not how it was done. Not, the mayor can't say, especially if she was one of the three tied. So, it's her interest, it's not gonna run with somebody else. We need, we need a dependence on someone of authority.
There was three people.
It's not him, it's hoping that it's to be you.
You have to take a breath.
I think, we can, we can do it.
You're just carrying on, you repeat yourself, you're going on and on.
I, I can repeat myself because of this.
Leave, leave your check at the door.
Are you leaving, Russell? You're leaving?
That was Russ the Sus' granddaughter, Charlene's daughter, who followed him out and her boyfriend.
So, what's going on this evening?
So, there's a town hall meeting, and they know that I'm gonna be here. I don't have an injunction or any type of order on myself. I have a permanent civil protection order on both him and her.
So, what are you saying?
And they're here, so they're blocking my entrance to go into the meeting.
And that, her.
John Cook and Lynette Preston. So, I called you guys so that you could ask them to leave, because they, they're not supposed to be here. Regardless whether they're here first or not, mine is permanent against them. They don't have anything against me.
So, they didn't follow you here?
No.
Right, they were already here?
They knew I was gonna be here, because it's a scheduled meeting.
Alright, so, you're just requesting us to?
Yes.
Get them to go the other way, and so you can?
They need to leave, yes.
Okay.
They're not to be within 500 feet of her, and they know that.
They're violating the 500 foot, and they've been doing this since we've gotten back to Florida. They, this was a scheduled meeting, they're blocking me from going in, both him, like John and Lynette, and they need to leave. Okay.
Let me go talk to the other man.
Okay, thank you, sir. I see one of the deputies talking to John through the window, she's still inside. Look, Russ is leaving, Russ is leaving.
While everything chaotic is going on inside, it's complete chaos as well outside.
You do. You do.
We can read the charter, we understand.
It's my truck. That is totally illegal, and they cannot do what they're doing. They cannot. They're just gonna, they're taking over the whole town, that's what they're doing. These don't even part of town anymore. Wow, we already called.
I said, I said that's why, that's why we're, um.
Yeah, you, you left, because they're setting, not even with a voter, nothing. They're just putting another two people in there.
So, you're being appointed? What's his name? Russell, question. Was he supposed to be appointed to something tonight? Just out of, okay.
He could have, he could have been, yes.
My question is, did he have a right to be here for?
Yes, yes.
Regardless of Deputy Duncan's question, and regardless of the answers, and regardless that Lynette says, "I do too." Regardless that they both have lied, all three of them now have lied, John, Lynette, Russ the Sus, because none of them, neither John nor Lynette, qualified to be seated. It does not matter. They can not be within 500 feet of George or myself. This is setting up to be one of the largest lawsuits against the state of Florida, the Levy County Sheriff's Office, neither of which have fully enforced the civil protection orders, which by state law, they must, and by federal law, they must.
Totally, it's totally wrong.
Yes, you did.
I didn't ask, how did she come on the street?
No, I don't know.
They were on the wall, and they were laid up like.
Correct, they were, they made two seats for one-year term.
Just.
Have a seat or leave the room.
Because this was not a stop.
Have a seat or leave the room.
Pardon?
Have a seat or leave the room.
No.
That waddle with those legs, that's Stuart Stewart, who came up and said, "You know what, I wanna change my two-year seat to the one-year seat." In other words, what he's trying to do is illegal. He's already filled out forms, running for the two-year seat. And there's three people, Don the Con, Laura Mott, Stuart Stewart, who are running for those two two-year seats. There must be an election for those seats. One and the two one-year seats only has two people, they get seated unopposed. Meaning, there's only two seats, two people, they sit automatically, because there doesn't have to be an election. And Don the Con, I don't know if he's trying to be a genie, or this truly is geriatric babysitting.
Alright, get the sergeant of arms over here.
Thank you.
This is so wrong, so so wrong. Everybody knows it, they just have their own.
If you're staying, have a seat, please.
You guys have been wrong for.
Please, if you're staying, have a seat.
Uh, no.
That's on the agenda. I, I have to tell you at this point, you do not have.
It was Russ the Sus and Don the Con that wanted the more expensive lawyer. Maybe they thought they would put her in their pocket. I don't know, but all of a sudden, they're not too happy with the lawyer anymore, because she actually wants to do the right thing, the legal thing.
Any, any actions taken on how this affected, and I thank everybody for coming tonight. Um, due to the fact that they don't matter, um, we will need new council, uh, council members to transact this. So, that makes it a draw.
Because two of the three remaining council members removed themselves and left in an effort to sabotage the meeting. It's all adjourned now. Now, the two new members did not get sworn in, therefore, they're not even officially in the seats yet. So, what will happen next month? They'll probably pull a no-show, Russ the Sus, Don the Con, or they will show, and they'll walk out again once they attempt to seat the two members. But, there's still more going outside with the deputies.
That's why we had to leave, that way it can be brought to the attention of, of real authorities.
If you really listen, you can hear John Crook saying, "Is that an employee of his? They can't be filming." Now, he's referring to the temporary injunction that Judge D'Atomasus has put on me. And, just so we're very clear, number one, we're in a public venue, anybody can film, including myself. It is a town hall meeting, regardless of who it is, okay? So, number two, in that temporary injunction, is added all constitutional-protected freedom of speech, which is First Amendment, freedom of press, I have every legal right to film, and so does everybody else. Now, point number three, I have no employees. Everybody, including George, is an independent contractor. They run their own business. They are their own entity. I'm not even an employee of myself. I literally have zero employees, which means nothing in the aspect of this conversation, because everybody, no matter who they are, constitutionally protected, including myself, if I was there, could be filming them.
That's the most unjust thing I've seen. Absolutely the most unjust. Put that away.
Is it over?
So, whenever they wanted to appoint us, uh, Russell threw, uh, fit like a little five-year-old, and said, "No, we ain't gonna do that, we're gonna vote on, put Stuart Stewart in that spot instead."
She just said that they were, Russell just told the cops that they were gonna put John Cook on the board.
They can't do that either, but he wanted to fill the spot with Stuart Stewart, which not gonna happen, you know? So, and they called me and Joseph Pate up there to take our seats, and at that point, they decided they didn't want any more to do with it. They got up and left, and you no longer have a quorum, so at that point, the meeting was adjourned.
What do you think the consequences are for Russell to lie to the deputies? Crook has no qualifying paperwork that is now legal in the state of Florida, and Russ the Sus tried to appoint Stuart Stewart, not John Crook.
Excellent, so I found the portion in there exactly what I was looking for.
Which one?
Thank you much. The portion where even if they are accidentally or likely to make contact with you,
Yeah.
that they are to immediately deport.
Yeah, and they know that.
And they know that, and they're still here.
And they know that, and they're still here.
This has been an ongoing issue since we got here in November.
She can't go anywhere without them, like, being there or showing up, and nobody's done anything about it yet.
And they do it to intimidate me.
And he especially does.
These are dangerous people. Look at, they, they don't care. They act like this doesn't exist, and that they're above everything.
The interesting part of this is the deputies spent 30-plus minutes trying to find the civil protection orders, which George had them in paper, but they have in the system. And how do we know this? Because that morning, we actually spent time talking to one of the detectives on how to teach the other deputies where to find it in their system, because every single time they violate the civil protection orders, it's the same thing. Well, we don't have access to it, we can't find it, and it's all there at their fingertips.
Okay, I went and talked with them. Yes, they did have a legal right to be here as far as they're being appointed.
There was no appointment, they're lying to you.
Okay, I even talked to other people.
No, he, he talked to Russell, Russell told them.
Who, Russell?
If, if there was a possibility of them being here for a legal cause, then they can be here. When you get here, obviously, they have to vacate, they're leaving right now. Um, so I'm still gonna write this up, I can do a sworn complaint, but I'm gonna do a sworn complaint against y'all as well, and I need your driver's license. Because I did see their injunction where, you know, their paperwork where it says, no people are recording, I don't know if you're employed or not.
So, you're gonna get everybody's?
No, she, they're saying you are employed by them.
No, she's not.
Either here nor there, here nor there, but just because this is, finger is pointed every which way, this is, like I said, I told you guys before, I'm not a lawyer.
You are not. However, may I say something?
Of course.
The injunction on them is, is being completely ignored. They had no reason to be here, other than the fact that they were going to be here to watch what was going on. They were told by their attorney that they could come, maybe, I don't know that speculation, but they knew for a fact that she was gonna be here.
So, I'm gonna pause you. They were saying that they talked with the state attorney's office, I don't know, like I said, you guys said you could talk with the state attorney's office. Said they've talked with the state attorney's.
Okay, so that's basically it.
Let me finish. They've talked to the state attorney's office, I don't, I'm not the state attorney's office, I don't know what they've told you individually or separately. That's for the, that's why we're sending sworn complaints to the state attorney's office to figure it out, because they're not, there's a disconnect between us and them, clearly.
Yeah.
And that's causing us, we've had this discussion before, where it's hard for us to do my job, our job, because.
You're here to do your job.
Okay, I have another question. If you find that the state's attorney says that they don't have rights to be here, then will they be prosecuted for being here, knowing they should have left? And with Russell Meeks lying to you guys and telling you?
That is up to the state attorney's office.
Okay.
Because that's what we do as far as a sworn complaint. What a sworn complaint is, is we have charges, let the state attorney's office look at all the facts of the case.
Because I heard Russell tell you, I heard Russell tell you that they were gonna appoint John Cook.
Okay, they said there's a possibility of it.
There isn't one, that's, it's, it's not even legal.
I'm not getting into Otter Creek town pol, town politics.
But that's what I'm saying, so they will be, if that's found to be a lie.
I have no idea, I'm not the state attorney's office, again.
Okay.
Okay.
So, she doesn't get arrested because? You missed the meeting because she was in there? Yeah, because John was blocking my way from getting in there.
So, they called the, they, they called the sheriff's office, and I saw the video, at 4:45, and nobody was here.
Okay.
Okay, and I, and like I said, I was reading their injunction paperwork, and as we've talked before, with our state system, our federal system, that we look up for injunctions, I can see the injunctions. It doesn't list anything about they must go at that, at this time when you show up. I did shoot my other deputy that showed up. He had the, I guess you guys gave him the copy, the physical copy, and I looked it up in there. And after I read the paperwork, that's what I told him. I said, "You guys have to leave." They said they're leaving anyways. So obviously, there's a breakdown in communication. Again, this is the, state attorney's office needs to clarify with us, because I can only do so much. As I know, this is sort of going in circles because we've had this discussion before. I've had this discussion with them before.
Did you guys just get here?
I'm sorry?
Did you guys just get here?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I know they're familiar with me. I've talked with them before.
And I know you too.
You're blinding me.
Yes, ma'am, so.
We like you.
Thomas, would you mind turning that off to keep the scene from this side? It's, so you're blinding other people from view?
Don't look this way. Don't look at it.
I'm looking at the whole thing from this side. You turned it on when you got over to that side facing us, dude. You can have your light on, but you can move a little bit too. That's still facing this way. I mean, you're still in my view. You shining a bright light directly at people's faces.
Come over on this side, Thomas.
That's totally separate rule from...
Okay, 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 stop, stop. Can we, can you both do me a favor? Okay, we're all adults, correct? Okay, I understand. You're pissed off about the light? I understand. You have a right to film wherever you want to, right? If you could do me a favor personally, if you could maybe move, I'll even, I'll even move to help you out. But I'd rather all... Okay, because that is, that is a bright light. I'll look at that. But hey, good for you having good equipment.
Can't spell biscuit, calls public property private property, and is purposefully shining bright lights in deputies' faces and George's. After dodging all of his legal paperwork for days, yes, he was finally served.
I appreciate you coming out.
Yes, ma'am. Like I said, like, we've talked about before, this...
I got it.
She's over there, and she's, "Oh, I talked with the state attorney's office yesterday, and they said I could be here." And then you're saying, "You talked with the state attorney's office, and they said they couldn't be here."
Correct.
So it's...
Because my, my, my permanent protection order trumps hers. I'm not on her temporary injunction. Temporary injunction that she has. She doesn't have one on me.
And I know, I did see that. It was just on Jeremy. Um, you know, and I, obviously, there's the disconnect. Um, but per my chief, Chief Beecham, going down is to make sure, first to verify with her if she has any kind of reason to be here. You know, yes, it is a public meeting place, but however, you're right, you do have an injunction.
Mm-hmm.
It needs to be, again, I don't know, I know you guys have sent many things to Ohio to send back. You know how I set on my system, what I can see?
Yes.
It still doesn't show the specifics of it.
She said her attorney told her to be here.
The detective that I spoke to said that it's in the communication center.
Detective Bowers?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I told him every time we make a complaint against them violating the civil protection order, no one can seem to find it. He said I was able to find it, just find in the communication center, whatever that verbiage means.
What they need to do is really scan it, scan it up to put it to our email. Because obviously, there's a disconnect between us and dispatch as well, because they have other calls going on. We're short in dispatch right now. On my shift, we had three quit, I think. So we're running like two or three right now. So for the entire county, that's including EMS and fire. You good? Okay, um, do you need anything else from me?
So, no, I was gonna ask you, do you need anything from me?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, do you have a case number?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do you want me to write it down on the card? Yes, please.
So once you get the information from the state's attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
And they make a decision?
Then they give us, they give us the decision.
Let's assume they make the decision that they shouldn't have been here.
Then they'll put out, then they'll put out a warrant. The state attorney's office will do that.
Okay, but then after that, should it happen again, are they gonna do all this again, and we have to wait for the state's attorney?
That is up to the state attorney's office. Like I said...
So you have to wait every single time?
Yeah, they...
That's why, that's why I said coming here, like we talked before, it's such a problem for us.
Would it be different if it wasn't from Ohio? Would it be different if it was...
Initially, now, I think it's been domesticated to Levy County, correct?
By law, civil protection orders do not need to be domesticated in Florida. By law, the Levy County sheriff have to enforce it. By law, the state attorney has to enforce it. This is state law and federal law. And by law, John and Lynette can't be there. When after the meeting is ended, is when the sheriff finally make them leave. So yes, it is going to the state attorney to press charges for arrest. And it's already gone up to Ohio as well for a judge who hasn't made a finalized decision on all the violations before. And now there's more evidence that they were there for over an hour and a half breaking the civil protection orders out of Ohio.
Because this was like a little different. A lot of us, even, I mean, at deputy level, we had no idea. You know, that's just honestly, because we're not lawyers. We, you know, try to go up with it. And then we try to talk, and if you remember our conversation, talking with the state attorney's office.
Yes.
It wasn't very clear. It was very, you know, "Oh, we recommend this, but do what you want and, you know, document."
Yeah.
Pretty much what the, what we were told.
Okay.
So I'm here just trying to do the best I can.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Seems like there's a whole lot more crazy when I don't show up to the meetings. A whole lot more entertainment. Want some good news? Lynette just proved to a judge in Florida that she is not paralyzed to her property, that she wants to be a public figure, and that she has no fear whatsoever. And she has complete and total disregard for the law.